Jeanette, are we recording already? Okay, thank you. It is 5:32 and we're going to call the meeting to order. I believe we left off on, I guess we'll start from the beginning, the consent agenda.
I, I need to, um, to have the minutes tabled and possibly we can deal with them during the, um, meeting that we have for the audit because I've asked repeatedly for the last two months to have them emailed to me so that I can make changes and they haven't been emailed to me, so I can't change anything.
You, you have not received an email yet, is that correct?
Well, I'm sorry?
Is that what you said? I just want to make sure I understood. You have not received an email yet.
I have not received them by email, yes.
Uh, Mr. Rapley, if we could get Ms. Winger the minutes by email?
I'm going to object to tabling the minutes.
Yes, sir, Mr. McCormick, your objection, please.
First of all, the, uh, the minutes have been, have been available for the most part for the last four or five months. These go back to June of nineteen, uh, twenty eighteen. There have been plenty of opportunity to make corrections. I said, secondly, no individual member of the council has the right or privilege to make routine changes without the consent of the rest of the council.
Right.
So, excuse me, I'm not there, Ms. Winger. If you can mind keeping quiet for a minute, I appreciate it.
Mr. McCormick, a little decorum, please proceed.
So, I think it's appropriate for us to go ahead with those minutes that have been on, on standby for a long time. If there are some specific minutes that Ms. Winger wants to table, I think we should entertain that, but I think we should proceed with the others forthwith. There's no point to keep delaying these. We're now almost a year back, June of twenty eighteen is a full year behind us.
Yes, sir.
So, there's no real point to waiting further on these things.
All right, Mr. Sh- yes, sir.
Mayor, the, th- these minutes are the minutes that were behind, obviously, in the last part of the year that, uh, Ms. Benitez, um, worked to get caught up, um, for the most part for two thousand eighteen, and now that Ms. Gonzalez has come on, has finished, um, the last, I believe, four meetings to get us fully caught up, uh, for two thousand eighteen and right-to-date for two thousand nineteen. And that's her responsibility to do the minutes and record the meeting.
Uh, yes, ma'am, Ms. Winger.
He wants to go first.
Mr. Sanderson.
Yes, would it be possible for us to go ahead and do item ten and eleven, which is the fourteenth and twenty-first, which is really the only ones that would make sense for me to go ahead and have any, uh, direct influence over, um, so we could do that? Can we handle those perhaps separately from the rest of them?
Mr. Schnall?
It is possible for Councilman Sanderson to have, uh, items A-X and X-I, A-ten and eleven, um, pulled from the consent agenda to be dis- discussed separately and acted on separately. Um, that would, you know, require the consent of the council. Uh, if there's no objection to that, then that can happen. If there is an objection, then it needs to be voted on by the council.
Okay. Um, does anybody have any objection to Mr. Sanderson's request? No objections? Okay, please. Uh, we start with, uh, item number ten, is that correct?
Ten and eleven, you know, X and X-I, I believe, I. X and X-I, I believe that's what we, that you stated.
So, those are the, those are the two you're not pulling.
That is correct. Uh, we'll handle them separately.
Okay, so, um, you can start.
So, what should I do? Should I?
I would address any issues you have with any of those two meetings.
Um, okay, so I, I have no changes to them, and so I move to go ahead and have them accepted, those, the X and X-I.
Second.
We have a motion to accept, accept, uh, X and X-I on the meetings, minutes. We have a second by Mr. McCormick. All in favor?
What, what are we just doing?
Uh, no, ma'am, not architecture review. We're on the meeting minutes.
Oh, the meeting minutes. Okay, so he's voting for the minutes.
Uh, Mr. Sanderson just made a motion to accept, uh, meeting minutes, X and X-I.
I'll vote for that.
Okay, so I'll ask again, all in favor of accepting the meeting minutes from May fourteenth and May twenty-first? All opposed? Oh, so you're, Mr. Gregory, you're voting with everybody else, uh, all in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Question.
Yes, sir. Uh, let me see what Mr. Schnall's, uh.
Mr. McCormick has objected to them being tabled.
Yes, sir.
So, and there was no second to the motion to table, so you're actively now considering the consent agenda, Part A, items one through nine, B, C, and D, unless there's some other suggestion.
But, there was no second for the ta- for the, his motion.
Can you repeat that, Ms. Winger, and your mic, please?
There was no motion, there was no second.
Exactly, that's what Mr. Schnall just said.
Mr. McCormick did not make a motion. Miss, someone else can make a motion, Mr. McCormick can make a motion, to accept I, uh, the consent agi- uh, consent agenda items A-one through nine, B, C, and D, or some combination thereof. This is open for action, for someone to make a motion or do something else in regard to the rest of the consent agenda. Mr. Sanderson's motion, having been adopted, clears out items A-ten and A-eleven as being approved.
Okay, I have no problem with that, but, but I asked for, for the, for the rest of them, one through nine, um, to be tabled, and Ms. Gonzalez seconded it.
I didn't hear a second from Ms. Gonzalez, I'm sorry. Uh, so we have a motion to table by Ms. Winger, a second by Ms. Gonzalez. Mr. Schnall, there's no reason that, I foresee that we can't take a vote on this, correct?
That's correct.
All in favor of tabling until the next scheduled meeting? All opposed? Mr. McCormick? All right, motion passes unanimously.
Mayor, mayor, just quickly.
I also would like to pull item D.
One second, Ms. Winger. Yeah, Mr. Rapley, yes, sir.
Sorry.
So, in requesting the minutes, Ms. Winger, did you want them copied as a PDF or in Microsoft Word?
In Word, please.
So, again, you want to be able to change the minutes?
Well, I want to be able to, to, if I have, you know, Word to insert or something, yes, and then, of course, I will do what I always do. I will send them to the city secretary. The city secretary will present those changes to council, and council will decide if they want to accept them or not. They don't have to.
Again, that's the responsibility of city secretary to record those minutes, and this is what is done, a complete set of minutes to be caught up. Um, I can talk to her, but that's going to be her decision to send that. I, I don't think it's possible or appropriate to send in Word to modify documents that have been recorded by the city secretary already.
Uh, Mr. Schnall, do you have an opinion on that?
It would be my judgment that providing Ms. Winger with a PDF copy of the minutes, she can hand-print any changes she wishes made and send them back to the city secretary for the city secretary to incorporate them. I'm not comfortable with the documents going out. It's going to, any member of this, of the governing body who has already taken the time to read items one through nine is going to have to reread them, compare them to the other version by hand, and that's, that's unfair to those members of the council who have already carefully reviewed them and determined that, that they were acceptable. And it's typical for changes of this kind to be made by the city secretary, and as Ms. Winger said, they would then be presented to the governing body for final action.
I, uh, would have to agree. That seems to be the cleanest way. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Winger.
Um, yes. Mr. Schnall, um, these minutes are all minutes for, that were given to us for the first time in the last two meetings. They are not minutes that we had before. All of the minutes that we were given before, I have already voted to approve. Um, I asked when they were sent if I could have them. They had always routinely done that to me before. Um, Mr. Rapley has stated twice that it would be done. Now, if he wants to change his position now, then he's changing his position now, but that's not what he said previously.
Well, I can't speak to what Mr. Rapley said or didn't say. He's right here. He can explain what he said. Um, I can only tell you, this is the first time I've been asked this question directly, and the answer I gave is the answer I would give if it had been a- asked to me before, that it would be appropriate for changes anyone wants to make to the minutes to be communicated to the city secretary, for the city secretary to incorporate into the final draft to be presented for council action. It, it's my recollection that at previous meetings, other members of the council did something similar to that and went through a series of changes or corrections that they wanted made, and sets of minutes were adopted based upon incorporating those changes. What we're talking about now is really no different from that, other than it makes it easier for the council to get a, a clean final version if the city secretary makes the changes. It's also easier for council members if the city secretary sends it as a, uh, track changes document, to be able to see exactly what revisions were made to facilitate review by someone who's already taken the time to review these minutes before.
That's correct, and all I'm asking for is the same thing that I've always gotten in the past, and if somebody wants to then change that, I should have been notified. But basically, if I can do exactly what you do on your computer, which is simply to put the changes in red, then it's very clear that the city secretary presents them that way, and the council has the option of approving them or not.
Okay, on that note, we're moving forward. Uh, agenda item number eleven, consider an act on an appointment of a council member to serve as mayor pro tem.
Mayor, excuse me, I, I did not hear a motion or any action on I, the consent agenda items B, C, or D. I believe Ms. Winger mentioned that she might want to.
I said I want.
Take some action on item D, but I don't think that was included in her motion.
I wanted to table D. I said, table D.
Okay, I.
Uh, why?
I will second that.
One second, please. Uh, as I understood it, we were tabling all of them. Uh, Ms. Winger, can you clarify for that?
No, I'm, I'm willing to vote on B and C.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, you want to vote to table D?
D.
Okay, and then a second by Mr. Sanderson. And Mr. McCormick, did you have a comment?
You say you were going to vote or pull on B? Bravo.
We're going to vote on B and C or pulling D.
Okay, I'd like to know why, why we're pulling D.
Ms. Winger?
Because I have questions that I need to address when we deal with the audit, that's why.
What are your questions?
I will deal with that when we.
Councilman Gregory is passing out a signed copy of the fourth quarter report that he's reviewed and signed, uh, that's ready to go in front of council today.
Okay, um, on that note, we have a motion to table D until the next, uh, regular scheduled meeting in July. Uh, we have a second by Mr.
Well, I'm willing to do it, as I said, at the, at the audit meeting, which should happen before that. We're supposed to schedule the audit meeting, the special call meeting, and that's where I would like to deal with this.
Okay, um, sorry, I stand corrected, uh.
I don't have a date, I'm sorry, but we haven't been given a date yet by the city.
I forgive you. Uh, so we're going to.
I'm checking to table item D, because we have a signed copy of the app, of the report here before us, that the treasurer, who has primary responsibility for that, has, uh, reviewed and signed. If Ms. Winger has specific questions, I think she should address them now. Mr. Gregory is here and can respond to them.
Unfortunately, we have a motion to table, and there really can't be discussion back and forth.
I'm sorry, you're right.
So, either the motion to table gets withdrawn to allow Ms. Winger to ask whatever question she has, or if she declines to withdraw the motion to table, then it's appropriate for the council to vote on the motion to table.
Ms. Winger, are you willing to rescind your motion?
No, I'm not.
Okay, so we have a motion to table until the special call meeting, uh, which day will be determined. Uh, we have a second by Mr. Sanderson. All in favor?
What exactly are we voting for?
Tabling D.
We're tabling item number D until the special call meeting, where we are going to talk with the, uh, financial.
Audit.
Audit advisor. So, we have a motion to table, first by Ms. Winger, a second by Mr. Sanderson. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
And did we vote on B and C?
We have not voted on B and C. Can I get a motion for B and C?
I move that we accept B and C.
Okay, we have a motion to accept item B and C.
Second.
A second by, uh, Mr. McCormick. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, let's see here. Consider an act on appointment of a council member to serve as mayor pro tem for a period of one year.
Item eleven.
I'm sorry, eleven. Yes, uh, the mayor pro tem. And, Mr. Schnall, is it, uh, it's my opinion that, uh, the mayor makes that appointment, is that correct? Uh, I'm double-checking with Mr. Schnall. I don't, does the mayor make that, or is that the council? Okay. Okay, if, uh, I'll give you a couple of minutes or a couple of seconds to look for that. Mr. McCormick?
No, I have the law. I have the law on that. At each new governing body's first meeting, or as soon as practicable, the governing body shall elect one alderman to serve as president pro tem for a term of one year. Since its election, the mayor does have a vote, but the council, the council and governing body together, uh, are the ones that make the decision, not just the city council.
Uh, the mayor's never had a vote on that before.
He's always had a vote, Ms., Ms. Winger. The sta- the statute provides that the mayor has a vote in elections, and this is an election.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'm going to give Mr. Schnall one second to sift through his notes here and give us an official answer, and then we'll proceed.
I do agree with Mr. McCormick that the, uh, the provision is that, as he read, twenty-two point oh thirty-seven B, at each new governing body's first meeting, or as soon as practicable, the governing body shall elect one alderman to serve as president pro temporary for a term of one year. I'm still looking to make sure that the mayor can vote on that item, um, and, um, I will see what I can find there.
Uh, item A, Mr. Schnall, twenty-two point oh three-seven A, the mayor shall preside at all meetings of the governing body of the municipality and accept the neglections. May vote only if there's a tie.
Yeah, to the appoint, to the extent this is an election of a mayor pro tem, Mayor Trevino may vote.
So, I vote, or do I get to appoint?
You, a member of the governing body should make a motion to make, to appoint someone as mayor pro tem, and then it needs a second, and then the governing body votes, and in this case, based on twenty-two oh thirty-seven A, the mayor may vote as well.
Okay, uh, Ms. Gonzalez has a motion, yes, ma'am?
I have a motion, uh, that Leslie Winger be mayor pro tem.
Okay, we have a first. Do we have a second?
I make a motion that Mr. Gon- Gregory be appointed mayor pro tem.
Okay, we have a second to that motion, uh, Mr. Schnall. How do we handle that?
You have to, Mr. McCormick's motion is out of order until the motion to elect Ms. Winger is voted on.
Okay, understood. Uh, so we have a first, we have a second. All in favor of voting?
And who's, who's the candidate?
Give me one second. Uh, we might have citizens to be heard, I apologize. Item number eleven. I, I don't see you signed up today, Ms. Scott. Okay, sure.
Moreta Scott, two oh seven Prince Drive. Um, just like it is good to make changes every so often, I think once someone has served as a member or as a mayor pro tem, or I could even take this into the other issues, but that would take point of order. Once you've served something, give someone else a chance to do it, just like we suggested hiring a different auditing firm every so many years, every so much, just to get a change of venue and someone else doing it. I'm thinking Ms. Winger's had her time as mayor pro tem for a year, and let's, let's give someone else a chance to have that position and to represent our city in that slot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Um, if we don't have anybody else, we have a first by Ms. Gonzalez, a second by Mr. Sanderson. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
No, it doesn't pass.
Motion fails. The, the requirement was a majority vote.
Oh, was it, was that not a majority? I'm sorry, I missed it.
A tie vote does not adopt the motion.
Okay.
This was a tie vote, three to three, the motion was not adopted.
Okay, so we.
So, another motion would be in order.
Mr. McCormick?
I nominate Mr. Gregory if he's willing to serve as mayor pro tem.
We have a first by Mr. McCormick to nominate Mr. Gregory. Do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor? All opposed? We're at another tie. Mr. Schnall?
Same result.
I move that we go ahead and table, uh, number eleven.
We have a motion to table number eleven. Do we have a second? Yes, sir, Mr. Gregory. Actually, we can't dis- we can't dis- uh, there's no discussion on a table, so.
The question is, is the position still filled even though, since you've had tie votes?
Generally speaking, a person who was elected to an office serves until their successor is appointed or elected and sworn in, so the existing mayor pro tem would continue to serve in that capacity if a different person were to be, and until a different person is elected as mayor pro tem. And I did not hear a second to Mr. Sanderson's motion to table.
Uh, do we have a second to Mr. Sanderson's motion to table? He's tabling the, the appointment of, uh, the mayor pro tem position. Till when, Mr. Sanderson?
Uh, I object to tabling the motion.
Okay, we have an objection to tabling the motion. Um, Mr. McCormick, can you please evaluate?
I have a question for Mr. Schnall. My understanding is that the term of the mayor pro tem ends when it's declared to end. Uh, I don't see any provision for holding over. I think the mayor is entitled to appoint whomever he wants to serve on, at, as mayor pro tem on an individual basis until one can be elected by the council, or by the governing body, rather.
I find no authority for that, and I think there is authority in the constitution, the Texas constitution, for, uh, an office holder to remain in office until their successor is elected and qualified.
Good.
Okay, well, uh, with all due respect, we'll go with Mr. Schnall's, uh, opinion. I guess we have a, uh, first to table until.
Next regular scheduled meeting.
Next regularly, regularly scheduled meeting. Do we have a second? Do we have a second to table the appointment until the next regularly scheduled meeting? Well, we don't have a consensus, we don't have a majority vote. So, do we have a second to table it? We have a second. All in favor of tabling it? All opposed? Motion passes. Consider an act on the appointment of a city treasurer.
Actually, I believe that, um, what, that the city treasurer position is not for one year. Am I correct, Mr. Schnall?
It depends on prior action by the governing body, would, of which I am not aware.
Well, Mr. Gregory was just elected treasurer last year. So.
But that doesn't mean he was elected to serve more than one year, so I don't know what the answer is without seeing the action that the council took to elect Mr. Gregory.
I would like to nominate, I would like to nominate Douglas Gray for his treasurer.
All right, second.
We have a first, we have a second. All in favor? Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Wait a minute.
Ms. McLean?
What happened to her? Did you sign the resolution?
I did not sign it.
Or when are you going to sign it?
I'm not sure yet.
Really?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, yes, Ms. McLean?
Amy McLean, one oh five Villa Anne Street. It's my understanding that Mr. Gregory has been in this position for double-digit years, at least ten years. Um, a treasurer is not even needed for a city that has a finance director position, so this really is a superfluous position for our city. We don't even need one. Um, and I reiterate Mrs. Scott's comments about the mayor pro tem, that we have somebody that's been serving in this position for way, way too long, and someone else needs to have a, a chance if council decides that they want to continue with the treasurer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLean.
May I address that?
Mr. Schnall, can Ms. Winger address that?
There's discussion on the nomination.
Yes, ma'am, please proceed.
Fine.
Ms. Winger?
No, if I'm, am I allowed to discuss it?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the reason that, that I have consistently voted for Douglas Gray for treasurer is that he has the background to handle that position that, as far as I know, is superior to anybody else's on council.
Any additional comments?
No comments.
All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Consider an act on appointment, uh, to the zoning commission. Is that? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Gonzalez. Your, your microphone's not on. Uh, real quick, before you proceed, Mr. Schnall, is that council-appointed?
Section fifty point dash five eighty-nine of the city zoning ordinance reads as follows. The council shall appoint a zoning commission as prescribed by, uh, Vernon's Texas Civil Annotated Statutes, Local Government Code, section two eleven point zero zero seven. The city council shall appoint two alternate members who shall serve in the absence of one or more regular members. These alternate members shall serve for the same period as the regular members, and any vacancies shall be filled in the same manner. Five members, this is section fifty dash, uh, fifty-five ninety, five number, members shall be appointed thereto by the city council, each to serve a term of two years, beginning on June one of each odd-numbered year and ending on May thirty-first of the next succeeding odd-numbered year. So, the city council is the, uh, appropriate body to appoint members to the zoning commission.
I find, I find fault with that. I have a complaint.
Please elaborate.
Looking at two eleven point oh oh seven of the Local Government Code, it is pretty clear that in Part A, to ex- zoning commission, to exercise the powers authorized by this subchapter, the governing body of a home-room municipality and the governing body of a general-law municipality may appoint a zoning commission. So, it looks to me like the mayor has an appointment, if he wishes to make one, and the council, uh, the governing body can vote on it.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear the word mayor in what you read out of section, of chapter two eleven.
What I said was governing body, and the governing body is the mayor and city council together, not just the city council. And you'll find that in chapter twenty-two early on.
I, I, I understand that, Mr. McCormick, but that puts the mayor on the same plane as any member of the governing body.
I think, I think the state law is entitled to do that if it chooses to do so. It's done it in the elections. It's done it here by saying the governing body makes the appointment, and it, it knows the difference. We have to presume the legislature knows the difference between the, the governing body and the city council.
All I'm saying is, to the extent that what you read in chapter two eleven is correct, the mayor is on equal footing with the members of the governing body in regard to the appointment of a zoning commission. Does not make him, um, primus inter pares, it just puts him on the same level.
Well, I agree, he, but the point is that he can make, he can make a nomination just like the other members of the governing body can.
That is correct.
Okay, then we agree.
I have something to say, Mr. Schnall, about that.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we also have a code here, which is why we were making certain changes, and in our code, um, it was, it was decided that, uh, at the same time that other things were decided, that the council was going to be the, the body, and that's always been the case in the past.
I have to say in response, uh, Ms. Winger.
Yes, sir, Mr. McCormick.
The, the city council does not have the right to strip the rights and privileges or responsibilities assigned to a member of the elected body, uh, by the state law. So, code doesn't, doesn't usurp state law.
Ms. Winger, Ms. Winger? Ms. Winger, Mr. McCormick's talking, please continue, I'm sorry.
I think, I think I said what I was intending to say, which is that the. I think, I think I said what I was intending to say, which is that the state law applies here, and the responsibility for the appointment lies with the governing body, which includes, includes the mayor. The mayor can make an appointment and nomination just like any other member of the governing body, and the code has no authority whatsoever to usurp state law. This is state law, not city code, and the state law preempts city code.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Winger.
So, Mr. Schnall, if that applies, then the same thing would apply for board of adjustment. Would that be correct?
No, ma'am.
Okay, well, then why not?
Because the language in two eleven point oh oh eight is different from the language in two eleven oh oh seven.
But the language for, for the board of adjustment says the same thing. We've discussed that.
No.
No, actually, it doesn't.
No. The mayor is on equal footing with the other members of the governing body in regard to the appointment of a zoning commission. That's what the reading would be of two eleven point oh oh seven, and to the extent the city's local ordinance is inconsistent with that, um, I agree with Mr. McCormick that state law will control.
Okay, and, and in that case, then, um, everybody gets to nominate someone, and then, then the, the council votes on that nomination. Is that correct?
No. That, the council hasn't decided to do it that way.
I'm sorry?
Council has not decided to do it that way.
Yes, sir, Mr. Gregory, thank you for, uh-
Well, I've sat through many years of this.
You speaking to your mic, sir?
I've sat through many years of this. When I was first appointed to the zoning board in my first year, one council member nominated me, and it was voted on. Subsequent years, we've had council members who bring things in a block, and because they were the first ones to be noticed, that block was voted on, one way or another. So, various things have occurred in various different ways. I think it's probably much more democratic, instead of having a block to vote on, that each council member nominate somebody that they would like to have on the zoning board. That was the case when I started. It was the case after that. But it, as I say, it's waffled back and forth between what each council wants to do.
Sure, um, if I may, uh, speaking of democratic, I have to believe that we should put out a call for applicants that want to be in these positions, whether it's zoning, architectural review, or board of adjustments.
But-
I, Ms. Winger?
We've already done that.
Ms. Winger. As far as I know, it hasn't been put on the site, on the website that we're accepting applications. Uh, Mr. Rappley, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, in the spirit of more transparency and bringing more people into be involved with the city, I, I don't see any reason why we couldn't put a call out.
Currently, no. I mean, we should have, uh, a, a place on the website which allows for, um, or to notify that we do have open positions, um, on our boards, uh, from that standpoint, but we don't right now.
Mr. Gregory?
Except under Local Government Code three nine two point zero three one. Although most of the mayor's appointed powers are established by ordinances enacted by the city council. Some are established by state law, such as the power to appoint commissioners of a housing authority. Uh, I do not understand this going out for a call. Uh, it's up to the individual council members to determine who wants to be nominated. I don't see what the purpose of a call does.
I, I move that we go ahead and, uh, adopt what you said right there. Basically, each council member, each person of the governing body, uh, nominates an individual, and, and go from there.
Some councils have done it that way.
Mr. Schnall, I don't know if that motion is appropriate, given how the agenda reads.
It says, "Consider an act on appointments to the zoning commission." I think Mr. Sanderson's motion is, is consistent with that wording.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's the method of appointment.
Okay, so we have a first? A second by Ms. Gonzalez. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I would like to nominate Joe Rodriguez as the chair, also for zoning. Second.
Can you tell us a little bit about Mr. Rodriguez's qualifications?
Mr. Rodriguez has been on zoning before, and he also has served on council, so he has a good background and a good knowledgeable background on zoning.
Okay, um, Mr. Mr. Schnall, should we hear from citizens at this point, I'm assuming?
We should hear from citizens before votes taken on the nominations, or at any other time the mayor wants to hear from citizens. If people have signed up, they need to be given an opportunity to speak.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Schnall. Uh, Ms. McLean?
Amy McLean, 105 Villa Anne Street. I applaud council for at least giving everyone an opportunity to appoint somebody, because last year this was basically shoved down my throat with having no say in who was on various commissions. So, I appreciate that you all are open enough to at least let everyone have somebody on these commissions. However, Mr. Trevino has a, a very good idea, because Mrs. Scott has an environmental design background. She would be the perfect type person to have on the zoning commission. We need to make sure that we have people on these commissions that have the background needed to make good decisions. Right now, those committees have a great, um, variety of people. Zoning has got a great group of people who are working together, and I would caution council to make sure that you open your minds to other people and not just those that are within your circle. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Ms. Scott? Okay, um, so we have a first, and so, Mr. Schnall, just for my, uh, education, do you appoint a chair, or is it, how does that work?
Historically, the, the council has appointed the chair of the zoning commission, since I was the recipient of that appointment five or six times. Um, that's how it was done.
Okay, so we have a first, uh, by Ms. Gonzalez for Mr. Joe Rodriguez.
I, I request a division. Um, I think appointing Mr. Rodriguez to the, uh, to the zoning commission is, is one set of votes, and appointing him as chair is another, and I think that should be postponed until all of the other members have been elected to see who's available to choose from.
Mr. Schnall?
Again, Mr. Schnall, that's not how it was done in the past, correct?
The times I heard it done, it was done in one of the ways Mr. Gregory described, which was done by slate. I recall one meeting where the slate was presented and voted down, and then a member of the governing body, um, nominated another slate, which included the specific designation of one member of that slate as chair, but, um, Mr. McCormick is free to, um, uh, make his, his comment on the election, and, and the council is, uh, then free to decide what step to take. Because this is uncharted territory, all we have is the historical, um, uh, way this has been done, and if Mr. Gregory or other people on the governing body, um, or even any of the people in attendance know, if there, in the past, especially recent past, there had been a separate vote to elect a chair of the zoning commission, separate from his or her appointment to the commission, that could be instructive.
Mr. McCormick, your mic, please?
I know, I know.
I made a motion for a division under Robert Schultz's order. It's open to second if somebody wants to second it. Otherwise-
We-
Is there any discussion on this?
Uh-
It's, it's a motion.
We have a, a motion by Mr. McCormick to divide it up. Um, we have a second by Mr. Gregory. All in favor?
No discussion?
Oh, discussion, I'm sorry, please.
And this is the governing body, you have a vote here, Mr.-
I'm sorry, what are we doing?
Uh, we're having discussion about that.
Whether to divi- whether to divide the two, and to vote on the chairman after all the members have been appointed, the, then the council would determine who they want as chairman. Uh, to me, it's a good idea, uh, so we know all five people to choose from. There may be somebody in it that is more spectacular than the previous person. You never know. That's just it. You don't know. That's the reason I've seconded the motion.
Again, I kind of go back to, uh, you know, my point is trying to be more inclusive and bringing in people that we don't know about, uh, to broadcast it out to the city and let them know that we're looking for subject matter experts, that we're looking for fresh blood. And if it's the same people that rise to the top, then so be it, but at least we've made every effort to be transparent and to be more inclusive in the city. Does anybody else have any comments?
Mayor, real quick, just earlier about putting it on the website like that. In other cities, um, have charters that kind of spell out that selection process, where you may put it on a website, and people apply based on, you know, their experience.
Sure.
So, I just want to clarify that.
And I've seen that on San Antonio's website. You can see all the available positions that are to be filled. That way, if you're interested in getting involved, you can go look, and you can apply. Uh, that's my opinion.
Okay.
So, we have a, uh, first by Mr. McCormick, a second by Mr. Gregory. Do, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, I, Mr. McCormick's motion failed. So, we're back to, uh, first by Ms. Gonzalez for Mr. Rodriguez, a second by Mr. Sanderson. All in favor? All opposed? Mr. Rodriguez's appointment to chair passes. Order one?
I move to appoint Todd Herman.
Okay, we have, we have a motion to appoint Todd Herman by Mr. Sanderson, a second by Ms. Winger.
Okay.
All in favor? All opposed? Uh, Mr. McCormick, you, you with or against?
I'm against.
Okay, opposed one, Mr. McCormick motion passes. That's two.
I would like to propose Mrs. Margot Peña to be on the zoning commission.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first by Mr. Gregory, a second by Mr. Sanderson for Ms. Peña.
Who, who again was the, was the nominee?
Margot Peña.
Margot Peña.
All in favor? All opposed? Mr. McCormick dissenting vote?
Do you have, do you have a nomination, Mr. McCormick?
Say again?
Do you have a nomination?
I'm going to nominate Moreta Scott.
We have a motion to nominate Moreta Scott by Mr. McCormick. Do we have a second?
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Okay, we have a second by Mr. Gregory for discussion, please.
Could we please, I would like, uh, Ms. Scott, if, I would like for Mr.-
Mr. Gregory, can you use your mic a little better, please? Thank you.
I would like Mr. McCormick's nominee, if it's in agreeable with Mr., uh, McCormick.
I can't hear you, Mr. Gregory.
I would like his nominee to come forth to the dais and tell us why she would be a good member of the zoning commission.
Uh, Ms. Scott?
Somebody else has been asked to do that.
Well, she doesn't have to. She doesn't have to. It's only with your approval.
That's true.
Ms. Scott, would you be willing to, uh, come forward as a potential nominee for the commission?
I would love to speak. Moreta Scott, 207 Prince Drive. Uh, thank you for the nomination, Mr. McCormick.
Uh, Mr. Gregory, do you have any questions?
Uh, what do you feel are the duties of somebody on the zoning commission?
Someone on the zoning commission, it is their obligation to look at how the city is zoned, um, how many single-family residents, whether it's A through G or H, I believe it goes through. But look at the zoning and make sure that there is enough buffer between commercial and residential. We've had a lot of issue with that lately, and, um, just look at all the zoning issues. As they're brought, one at a time, each situation is unique. Usually, they're asking for a special use permit. I have a master's degree in environmental design. That's what I studied on a graduate level, was where to put certain types of buildings. Where do you put homes? Where do you put businesses? Where do you place things in an environment? So, I feel I have a very strong background in this particular field and topic, and, um, so that, that's why I feel I would be an excellent candidate to sit on this committee, because I could look at each applicant that wants to do something different with their zoning, and really know where to find the information and the research on whether, what they're asking to do is meets health and safety guidelines, is logical, is a good placement, and be open to listen to residents who feel maybe differently than that. So, um, I feel I have very strong qualifications. I mean, I-
May I ask Ms. Scott one more question?
By all means, as long as she's willing.
If you, generically speaking, when a zoning question is brought before the commission, it usually is a question that impacts residential people or business people, or business concerns. Do you feel that one group should be, uh, considered more favorably than the other, business versus residential area, or residential area versus business?
I know how you feel on this topic. I know you feel very strong about the residents, which they are very important, and their input is very important. At the same time, you have to look at the impact of the business, how much tax revenue is coming in. So, once again, it's unique to each situation, and the ideal is to find a way to synergize together to win-win, where the business is happy and the residents are happy. If you can't find a happy medium at the zoning committee, then it's going to fall on each person to weigh the pros and cons. Are the tax dollars going to bring in more money for streets and drainage that the citizens want? Or is the issue going to cause more trouble for the residents than it's worth for the tax revenue? So, you really have to weigh each decision individually. So, I can't say I'm more pro-business or pro-resident. It depends on each situation as you evaluate it, and where it's located within the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Scott? Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we have a first by, uh, Mr. McCormick, a second by Mr. Gregory. All in favor of appointing Ms. Scott? All opposed? Okay, mo- a motion fails. Do we have any other motions?
Um, I would nominate Janet Baker.
Okay, we have a motion to nominate Janet Baker.
Second.
A second by Mr. Sanderson. All in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimously. I, remember, if my, my counting is right, I think we have one more, is that correct?
No. Sorry, where are we?
I, I'd like to have, um, somebody that we don't know, honestly. I'd like to put a call out to, for a resident that-
Okay, so you don't want to make your nomination?
I would like, I would respectfully ask that I have my nomination placed out on the website so we can get somebody that's interested in this, that's not a part of the pool that we already know.
The, the city ordinance says, "Five members shall be appointed to the zoning commission by the city council, along with two alternate members." I thought earlier this evening, the council voted to have each, um, council member make a nomination of someone to be in the zoning commission. Five council members made motions to, to elect individuals to the zoning commission. Four of those motions were adopted. Mr. McCormick's motion was not adopted.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. McCormick has not made his appointee, or the person he wanted appointed, has not been determined at this point. Um, and there have been no alternate members, um, nominated or voted, uh, or nominated or appointed or voted on.
Okay, and if, uh, Mr. McCormick, do you have anybody else?
I'll nominate Mike Flynn.
Okay, we have a nomination for Mike Flynn. Do we have a second? Ms. Gonzalez, you have a question? You wanted to know his background? Okay, well, I think it's a-
He has a PhD in environmental science.
Seems like a decent applicant.
And he's been on the zoning commission.
And he's been on there, so he has experience, okay.
It's, Mayor, has there been a second?
Um, do we have a second for Mr. Flynn? Mr. Gregory?
Answer.
Do we have a second for Mr. Flynn? Just asking.
Who's nominating Mr. Flynn? I nominate Mike Flynn. No.
Okay, uh, motion dies for lack of second.
Okay, then I'll renominate Moreta Scott.
Okay, we have a nomination for Moreta Scott.
Renominate, you have to come up with, if, if, Mr. Mr. Schnall, if, if Mr. McCormick doesn't have anybody, there's nothing that precludes another member of council for making a nomination.
First of all, Mr. McCormick is free to make a motion to nominate Ms. Scott. Council, council's position on that nomination may have changed. And second, under the procedure that the council adopted, Mr. McCormick has this nomination. that the council adopted, Mr. McCormick has this nomination. And it doesn't fall to another member of the governing body based upon the agreement to do this the way Mr. Gregory suggested that the council agree to.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Schnell. We have a first for Moreta Scott by Mr. McCormick. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gregory, déjà vu. All in favor? All opposed?
In that case, I'll defer my nomination until I have the opportunity to post a vacancy on, on the city website to consider other applicants.
I like that.
May I make a comment on that?
Mr. Gregory?
I seriously believe we ought to have a fifth person tonight because if the zoning commission starts now, it's very well they might be deadlocked on decision after decision after decision because they don't have an odd number of people on the board. And if precedent is anything, this city is slow to get around to do a lot of things. And it might be wise to have a fifth person put on there so that we don't have a deadlock zoning, possible deadlock zoning commission for weeks upon weeks upon weeks.
I've put up a couple of names, Mr. Gregory. Uh, the council has rejected those. I think I'm entitled to defer my nomination until I can make, uh, make the position available and have, have the applicants reviewed.
If council would like to choose alternates, then they could serve until Mr. McCormick's candidate is.
I have an, I have a nomination for alternate John Herndon, who lives on Prince.
We have a first for John Herndon. Um, do we have a second?
Sir.
Lots of seconds. A second by Ms. Gonzalez. All in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimously.
I have a nomination for an alternate.
What was that, sir?
I have a nomination for an alternate.
Okay.
I'll name Amy McLenn if she's willing to serve.
Okay, we have a nomination for Amy McLenn. Do we have a second?
First of all, are you willing to serve?
Oh.
I'd be willing to serve. This is God's best choice. I'd be willing to back.
So Ms. McL, uh, Ms. McLenn appears willing.
If she will serve, then a second's appropriate.
We have a motion by Mr. McCormick. Do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of second. Okay, Mr. McCormick, do you still reserve the right to hold this position?
Uh, it's an alternate position. I think the council at large and, and mayor are entitled to make a nomination for an alternate if they wish.
Uh, Ms. Winger, can you use your microphone?
According to Mr. Schnell, did we just vote against that, Mr. Schnell?
No, what, what you just did is vote against Mr. McCormick's nominee. No one seconded Mr. McCormick's nomination to appoint Ms. McLenn to be the second alternate member of the zoning commission.
But he's.
So right now, there's a, a, a alternate member of the zoning commission, commission position that could be nominated and voted on. And Mr. McCormick has indicated he wanted to defer his nominee until he has a chance to have the city, I think what he was saying was have the city, um, put a notice on the city website asking interested folks to apply to, uh, an appoint, apply for an appointment to the zoning commission, and he might choose one of those people to bring before the council at a future meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I have a name, a nominee for an alternate.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Gregory.
George Booth.
Okay, we have a nomination for George Booth.
I second it.
We have a second by Ms. Gonzalez. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. So we just have Mr. McCormick that is waiting to have his position filled by, by the call online, and I appreciate that. And I, I think in the future, being able to bring forth applicants with a limited background about them to show how they would be a good fit for the board or commission is, uh, it's good. Yes, sir, Mr. Gregory.
I think going forth, it may not be a bad idea. Uh, at least it gives the, the council a pool other than the people that they might consider to consider. So it might not be a bad idea.
And I, I think if counts, all of councils provided with background information about the applicants, we can all make an educated decision for the residents as opposed to just the people that we know. That being said.
This will be an agenda item, though, that, that we would do in the future. Is that what you're all talking about?
But this is just an idea of the way that I believe that it should be.
Okay, gotcha.
Uh, Mayor.
Yes, sir, Michelle.
You skipped item number 10, which is discussion and possible action on approving an ordinance that would amend sections 83 dash 23A, 83 dash 23B, and 8 dash 23C of the code of ordinances, which would provide for the appointment of members and chair of the architectural review committee to be made by the city council. So before moving to item 14, I do recommend that the council consider item number 10, and it be in your position as presiding officer to open item number 10.
Okay, sir. Thank you. Discussion and possible action on approving ordinance number 2019 dash 06 dash 11A, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Castle Hills, Texas, amending sections 8 dash 20 through A and 823B and 823C of the code of ordinances to provide for an appointment of members and chair of the architectural review committee to be made by the city council. Ms. Gonzalez.
I move that we go ahead and let the council make those choices.
Would that be a motion to adopt ordinance?
Yes, to adopt it, yes. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Gonzalez, a second by Ms. Winger. We have, we have a citizen to be heard on this, Ms. McLenn.
Amy McLenn, 105 Villa Anne Street. The power plays by council are just absolutely amazing to me. And the fact that council feels like they should be in charge of everything, when statutorily you do have some responsibilities, and that's fine. But I really am very disheartened by everyone who was elected this year, that you are not looking at what is the best for the city. So please consider what's best for the city.
Thank you, Ms. McLenn. Okay, that is it. Uh, Ms. Gonzalez, what's, what's the impetus for this, if you don't mind me asking? The impetus?
I'm sorry, what is the question? It was my choice. I felt that it should be the councils making those decisions, and that's why I put it on the agenda.
Asking.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so we have a first, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Uh, Mr. McCormick descending vote, motion passes, four to one. Uh, jumping back down to item number, what is this, 14, consider an act on the appointments to the architectural review committee.
I move that we table 14 and 15 until the July meeting. I haven't had an opportunity to find people possibly to put on those committees.
We have a motion to table till July?
Second.
Second by Ms. Winger.
Question.
Mr. Gregory, please.
Uh, not on a motion to table.
Oh, you're right. You always get us. I'm glad you're on, on, on the ball. All in favor?
Here.
Uh, they got me. Uh, Ms. McLenn?
I'll use my phone with Scott.
And Ms. Scott, okay. Ms. Scott, please.
Why are we hearing a motion to table?
Moreta Scott, 207 Prince Drive. The only reason I wanted to speak on this is that it is near and dear to me, having a master's degree in environmental design. And although it appears to the council, you don't give much credence to people's educational backgrounds. For the architectural review committee, I beg of you, please find licensed, registered architects to serve on this committee. You need people with a good, solid foundation in architecture that have worked in the field at least a decade, I'd suggest 15 years or more, to serve. Currently, right now, there are three licensed architects on the committee. They bring to that committee a sense of validity and they can back up. They know building code forward and backwards. They know living in Castle Hills, that we have difference rules for setbacks and various things concerning our lot sizes and that sort of thing. So please, when you are thinking about your nomination for the art committee, and this is to you too, Mr. Sanderson, even though you don't appear to be paying any attention to me whatsoever, Mr. Sanderson, I'm talking to you too, please go out of your way to find some licensed, registered architects. There are a lot of them here in Castle Hills. Currently, there are three on the committee. I would love to see even more than that. It's important for architectural view to have architects. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Um, you have a question for Ms. Scott?
Ms. Scott?
Ms. Scott, um, Ms. Winger has a question for you.
I have a question.
Mr. Schnell, opinion?
What, the issue is someone on the council has a question for Ms. Scott?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Scott is not required to answer a question.
Okay.
Ms. Scott spoke as a citizen, and she made her comments. It's up to Ms. Scott whether she wishes to answer any questions.
Perfect, thank you. Um, if that is all we have, we have a motion to table by Ms. Winger. I believe it was a second by, I'm sorry, a motion by Ms. Gonzalez, second by Ms. Winger. Uh, there's no other discussion. We'll take a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. It's going to be table till the July scheduled This is correct. We have item number 20. Discussion and possible action on resolution number R. 19 dash 05 dash 21A, a resolution of the city council of the city of Castle Hills on conduct of participants at open meetings. Ms. Winger?
Objection, consideration of the question.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. McLenn, can you please approach the.
Excuse me, may I, may I speak first?
There is an objection from a citizen. We need to hear the objection first.
Ms. McLenn, if you need to approach the podium and states your objection.
I object to the consideration of this question based on the fact that it violates the U.S. Constitution and the Texas Constitution. I brought this up the last meeting. There has not been a single change to a single word in what is being proposed by council. The U.S. Constitution in amendment one says, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise of thereof or abridging the freedom of speech." The Texas Constitution, Article One, Section Eight, Freedom of Speech and Press, provides, "Every person shall be at liberty to speak, write, or publish his opinions on any subject being responsible for the abuse of that privilege, and no law shall ever be passed curtailing the liberty of speech or of the press." Last time, I also mentioned the U.S. Supreme Court case, Cohen versus California, 403 U.S. 15. Have a copy?
I don't know if this one I have or not.
For Mr. Schnell, I raised this, this problem the last time, and it's still a problem. There hasn't been a single change to a single word in what's being proposed.
Thank you, Ms. McLenn. Um, Mr. Schnell, do you have any comments for that?
It is my strong recommendation that this item be polled or tabled permanently, or, excuse me, tabled indefinitely. I agree with Ms. McLenn that this is a, a proposal that is to attempt to prohibit content-based statements. I believe that is prescribed by the constitutions of both the United States and the state of Texas, quoting Justice Scalia in RAV versus City of St. Paul, Minnesota, 505 U.S. 377 at 382. The First Amendment generally prevents government from prescribing speech or even expressive conduct. Because of disapproval of the ideas expressed, content-based regulations are presumptively invalid. And that is also a, a quoting from Justice Kennedy in a 1991 decision. So I, I strongly recommend that this item either be polled or that it be tabled indefinitely.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. That's sage legal advice.
I'm one of the co-authors of this. Can I go against Justice Scalia or Mark Schnell? So I recommend we pull this item.
Second.
We have a motion to pull by Mr. Gregory.
Or I just pull my motion. That doesn't require a vote, does it?
I don't know, Mr. Schnell?
Think we've done a vote in the past.
He didn't make a motion. We never made a motion.
Do we need to make a motion to pull his motion?
I think it's fine to have the motion that Mr. Gregory made and Ms. Winger made voted on.
Okay.
It's fine.
So first by Mr. Gregory, second by Ms. Winger. All in favor? Perfect. Uh, motion passes. The item is permanently tabled. Uh, item number 21, discussion and possible action on the creating of the Streets and Drainage Committee to prioritize street and drainage project spending and related matters as recommended by the Ad-hoc Project Committee, Streets and Drainage Committee to include subject matter experts from among our citizens, Mr. McCormick.
I'd.
Mr. Ms. Winger, your microphone is not on. Ms. Winger, your microphone is not on.
Mayor, I believe you recognize Mr. McCormick.
I did. Uh, Mr. McCormick, please? Your microphone, Mr. McCormick?
Yes. Well, I think we discussed this on, the first time I presented it to the council. We've had a Streets and Drainage Committee for some considerable period of time. The purpose of the Streets and Drainage Committee is essentially to prioritize Streets and Drainage projects based on the capital improvements plan that has been developed by Mr. Rapley and, uh, reviewed by our city engineers. I think it's appropriate that the Streets and Drainage Committee, uh, review those for, for priority, determine which are done first and to determine what, uh, what financing is available and what financing might be procured if that's appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick.
I'd.
Ms. Winger, your microphone?
I have it on, sir.
Now it's.
Is it not working?
It is now. You, you don't have to hold it down.
Okay. I'd like to move to table number 21, 22, and 23 to the July meeting.
We have a motion to table item number 21, 22, and 23.
Mayor, I, I, these items are not entirely related, um, and you've only opened item 21, so I would recommend that we.
Table them individually.
Have Ms. Winger agree that her motion at this point is to table item 21, and then you can open 22. If she wants to make the same motion, she can. But it just seems to me we ought to do these one by one.
I would agree with you. And Ms. Ms. Winger?
Yes, table item 21.
And we're tabling it till?
July meeting.
Till the July meeting. That's a motion by Ms. Winger. Do we have?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Sanderson. All in favor? All opposed? Mr. McCormick, did you vote for or against?
I voted for.
Okay, sorry, I missed that. Uh, motion passes unanimously. Item number 22.
Move to table to the July meeting.
We have a motion to table by Ms. Winger.
Second.
Till the July meeting. Ladies first. Uh, Ms. Gonzalez, a second. All in favor? All opposed? Uh, Mr. McCormick descending vote. The motion passes, four to one.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to rescind item number eight.
We're on number 23.
Give me one second on that, Ms. Scott. Uh, Mr. Schnell, can you give us an opinion?
The rules of order, which are still in force unless the mayor has signed the resolution and the resolution adopted last evening has been filed with the city secretary, signed by the mayor, that, um, that, that action is not, uh, final or effective. So the old rules of order, which are now still in force, at least until something else happens, allow a citizen to request rescission of action by the council. However, um, I, I think you had already opened item 23, so I think the action should be taken under number, action should be taken under number 23, and then no motion to adjourn should be made until Ms. McLenn's request to rescind item eight is acted upon.
Uh, Ms. Scott?
I'm sorry, Ms. Scott, I wasn't looking.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Schnell.
Item 23, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Gregory.
I'd like to call item 23. I've reviewed the, the law since my original proposal and find that I do not believe that the city of Castle Hills has the legal authority to form a, a, a separate charitable foundation. In addition, the goals that I had in mind for the, for the charitable foundation are not really, appear to me at this time to be practical. The reason is that I spent today in class with the, uh, grant management program. The reason is that I spent today in class with the grant management program, and I had an opportunity to talk to a number of people who are dealing directly with grants, and it appears to me that it will be three to five years at a minimum before the Castle Hills Charitable Foundation, if we established one, would be likely to be able to have a record that would attract a grantor. And so, what I'm saying is that if we establish a charitable foundation, the odds are very great that for the first three years at least, perhaps five years, all of the support financial revenue to the foundation will be from private donations. I do not believe that this is an entity that can be supported by the city, and I believe that I have found a case law, Attorney General opinion, I believe it's DM-054, 0544, that says pretty clearly that general law cities do not have the authority to establish separate foundations because it's not in their charter. Essentially, general law cities have the rights only to exercise the privileges specifically given them by state law, and this privilege is not given us by state law, neither is it implied from any of the responsibilities that are applied to the city under state law. So, I'd like to pull this at this time.
And that's pulling it indefinitely? Is that correct?
Pull it permanently.
Permanently. Motion to pull it indefinitely by Mr.?
That's a motion to postpone indefinitely.
Postpone indefinitely by?
No, it's pulled indefinitely. It's a difference.
Yeah, I think that's what I said was pulled. Does it make a difference, Mr. Schnell? Mr. Schnell, do you have agreement with my analysis?
I agree that a general law city does not have a specific statutory authority to form a nonprofit corporation, and as I believe I mentioned at prior meeting, those nonprofit corporations with which I am familiar and have checked were in fact not formed by even home rule cities, but formed by interested citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. So, we have a motion to pull by Mr. McCormick, second by Mr. Sanderson. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Mayor, it would be appropriate now to recognize Ms. McLean, excuse me, Ms. Scott, on her request for rescission.
Perfect. Ms. Scott? Ms. McLean, if you could please approach the podium after Ms. Scott?
Martha Scott, 207 Prince Drive. I'm asking you to consider rescinding number eight that was passed last night, four to zero with one abstention, for the following reasons. You are rescinding the Roberts Rules of Order, which currently are being used today. You did pass to use Roberts Rules of Order, the newly revised eleventh edition, and I want to make sure that council, you have reviewed Roberts Rules eleventh edition, to make sure that you are fully aware of what's in Roberts Rules eleventh edition, whether that would be better or worse for the council overall, as far as you want people to stop popping up and down. Do you know that Roberts Rules eleventh edition might allow more popping up and down than what we currently have in our current Rules of Order, or less? Have you reviewed the eleventh edition? Because if you haven't, I might suggest it. That's why I'm asking you to possibly rescind this until you can review it, to find out if we're going to have more or less popping up and down, using the official Roberts Rules versus the ones that were set up as for the city. My other reason for wanting to possibly rescind this was I did not have my question answered last night concerning Texas Penal Code 42.05, which is regard to public meetings. I want to know if public meetings for a political purpose, like a city council meeting, falls under 42.05, or if because political speech is protected in a separate way than regular public speech, if 42.05 actually would apply to our meetings or not. And I think that would require a legal opinion on that, because things that the Supreme Court says that I can say or not say in a political setting would actually get me in trouble under Texas Penal Code 42.5 if I did it in a different setting. So, that's my concern with that on number eight. Actually, my two concerns. So, make sure you know the devil you know versus the devil you don't know. So, you put something into place. I just want to make sure all y'all are aware, and you've read the rulebook. I'm, Mr. Trevino, I believe, does have a copy of that. So, it's a pretty thick book, and when you look through it, what citizens can or can't do, might be careful there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Gentlemen, Mr. Mayor.
Give me one second, gentlemen. Mr. Schnell, what's the appropriate course of action now?
A member of the governing body may make a motion to rescind the adoption of the resolution. I believe it was resolution R-19-06-11, which was adopted under item eight. And as indicated earlier, it's my understanding that the resolution has not been signed yet by the mayor, or filed with the city secretary.
I have a question regarding that. Mr. Schnell?
I believe I called for first attention.
I'm sorry, you what?
I called for first attention.
Yeah.
Called for what?
Let's split the difference. Mr. Gregory, you had a question?
Just an observation, Mr. Mayor. I have the ninth edition, but I think it would be, on Mrs. Scott's suggestion, I would like the mayor to authorize this, I don't think we need a motion to do this, for everybody to have a copy of the eleventh edition. I have the ninth. But everybody might want an updated copy.
I have an eleven.
I think that everybody should go buy an eleventh edition.
No, the city provides that, just like the city has provided the Texas Municipal Code to everybody, revised editions.
Sure, okay. Thank you, Ms. Thank you. Mr. McCormick?
First of all, I believe the current rules in effect do not allow motions to be made from the audience, notwithstanding the fact that they can raise points of order and that sort of thing. I don't believe that they can initiate motions. Secondly, a motion to rescind in the same session of council, I believe constitutes a motion to reconsider, which is required to be made by one of the people who voted for the motion to be rescinded. And under those circumstances, I don't believe that the motion as made can be considered, unless the mayor has reopened this matter for consideration, discussion, and revote. Without such a motion, I think we're improper at this point.
Well, we're still in the same meeting, because it was recessed as we were last night. I believe by implication, although we can make it more formal, Mayor Trevino can reopen item eight for the possibility that a member of the governing body who voted in favor of the resolution, a member of the, Mr. McCormick is right, that the motion to rescind needs to be made by someone who voted in favor of the action. So, and I don't remember now, and I will have to look at my notes to see if anyone voted, who voted for and who voted against that item, unless Mr. Rapley has it in his notes. Let's see, here we go. Item eight, it was a unanimous vote to adopt the resolution under item eight, and under the circumstances... It appears to me that any member of the governing body can make the motion to rescind the adoption, and we're back under item eight. Correct, Mayor?
Yes, yes, sir. Do we have a motion to rescind?
I made that motion, sir. That's what it says in the rules.
You're not on, you didn't make the motion. You're not on council.
Ms. Scott?
The, the, the motion, the Rules of Order say, "Any citizen may present a motion, then any decision previously adopted by the council be rescinded. Approval shall require the same number of votes as required for decisions' approval." So, to the extent that these are what the rules say, and they haven't yet been rescinded because of the non-signing of the resolution and non-filing of the resolution with the city secretary, this is a matter that's available for action by the governing body under the local rules. This is unusual, to say the least, but those are the local rules.
So, and to your point, then, we have a motion by Ms. Scott. Now, the body would have to vote to accept that motion. Is that correct?
The motion needs to be approved by the same number of votes as required for the decisions' approval. That means three members of the governing body would have to vote in favor of this motion to rescind. Mayor does not vote unless there's a tie.
Got it. Do we have a motion to?
The motion is, Ms. Scott, by virtue of the wording of these rules, Ms. Scott has presented the motion that is ripe for action.
Okay, so, all in favor of Ms. Scott's motion? All opposed?
We're not...
Excuse me, what are we doing right now?
Ms. Scott presented a motion to rescind item number eight.
Does it require a second?
As Mr. Schnell has just provided, the motion has to be voted on, and it would have to pass by three votes for us to rescind it.
No, I'm just saying, does she have a second for us to vote on it?
I don't think that she needs a second, Mr. Gregory.
Why not? We need a second.
A motion to rescind appears to require a second.
Thank you.
A second from the governing body?
That's the only people who can make a second.
Okay, do we have a second?
What was the original vote, Mr. Schnell?
My notes say that the vote was unanimous.
I think it was four to one.
No, it was four to zero to one abstention. How about four, one was?
Wait a minute. Okay, I'm sorry. That is, that's correct. It was, the motion was four in favor, no against, one abstention.
Technically, it was unanimous.
Okay.
Four to zero. Abstention doesn't count.
Okay, so, Mr. Schnell, we have to have a second by council? Is that correct?
The Roberts Rules, which would be the default even under the local rules, because it says, "For any point not covered by the Rules of Order of the City of Castle Hills, Roberts Rules of Order shall apply." And my page here says that a motion to rescind requires a second, is debatable, is amendable, and needs a two-thirds vote for approval. And our local rules make that a majority vote for approval.
Okay, do we have a second? Repeat, do we have a second? If I stand correctly, the motion dies for lack of second.
Apparently so.
Okay.
Now, I have a question of Mr. Schnell.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Schnell, as has been pointed out, in the event that the mayor, you know, fails to act or refuses to act, then the mayor pro tem can act. Is that correct?
No.
What is?
Not, not exactly.
I already stated my position on having two presiding officers.
But, among other things, this discussion and this question is not on the agenda, and therefore is not appropriate for it to be discussed at this time, at this meeting.
Ms. Winger, Ms. Winger, Mr. Schnell, I'm sorry, please continue.
Okay. The local government code, Chapter 52, has a provision that allows the mayor to take action within a certain period of time in regard to ordinance and resolutions. And until the mayor fails, is unable, or refuses to do so...
That's my point.
That they, I would say that the mayor pro tem does not have the authority to act unless the mayor has completely failed, refused, or otherwise not done something.
What is the period of time?
Mr. Sanderson, yes, sir. Your question?
My apologies. My question to Mr. Schnell, you said a period of time.
Right.
Can you, can you tell me a little bit?
Four days from when the resolution is filed with the city secretary.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Schnell?
And, and we cannot continue to talk about items that are not on the agenda.
Okay, that being said, we have any announcements by the council?
I have, may I motion to rescind the resolution?
Ms. McLean, can you please approach the podium and state your?
Amy McLean, 105 Villa Anne Street. And as a citizen, under our local rules, I'm making a motion to rescind resolution number 2019-06-11-A, which was adopted by council last night. The citizens don't need to be put in a timeout. The sections B and G in this resolution adopted seem to be in conflict to me. First, you're going to let residents sign up to speak on items that are on the agenda, and then, all of a sudden, under number G, you're going to pull the rug out from under them and decide, yeah, you get to choose, you get to speak, you don't get to speak, I don't like you today, you get to speak, you get to speak, you don't get to speak. So, in here, under G, you have said, after everyone's gone through and they've signed up on items they want to talk about, and they've been given a time limit, under G, you were saying that the council members, a majority of council members present, may choose whether a person or persons in attendance may be allowed to speak prior to or during consideration or discussion of an agenda item. So, you were putting a huge amount of control on council to control the speech of the residents. If you're going to do it, it should be an all or nothing thing. And under the way this is written, I think you have a huge conflict, where you're baiting and switching the residents, and then you're going to pick and choose who you decide you're going to want to hear from. So, I would highly encourage council to rescind this resolution and reconsider something else, or just not reconsider it at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Mr. Schnell, if I understand correctly, at this point, we'd have to have a second, correct?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second to rescind Ms. McLean's item? I'll ask one more time. Do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of second. Do we have any announcements from council members? Mr. McCormick?
Yes. No announcements.
Okay, Mr. Sanderson?
None at this time, thank you.
Ms. Gonzalez? Ms. Winger?
I would like to...
The city's oldest resident, Ms. Evelyn Moore, hundred and four and a half, was taken to the hospital last week. She's a Northeast Baptist, as I understand it. Anybody who'd wish to send her a card or stop by is more encouraged to do it, as I say, she's the oldest citizen of the city.
Thank you. I would like to kind of briefly touch on what was mentioned yesterday regarding our officers Corporal Munoz and Officer Earlywine, who were subject to an incident early Saturday morning. I've seen Officer Munoz, or Corporal Munoz, several times, and he is going through the recovery process, and he appreciates all the well wishes and the support, but he unfortunately will have a long road to recovery, because he's going to be requiring several surgeries.
Do you know what hospital he's in?
I believe he's, Mr. Schnell, is there any, am I allowed to say which hospital he's at? He's probably going home tomorrow. If you have any questions, I would probably talk with...
Is that Romeo?
Yes, ma'am. Corporal Munoz. It's, it's an unfortunate reminder of the dangers that these officers experience on a daily basis, and it's a reminder that regardless of how safe we think our city is, things can still happen.
Freeways are dangerous.
And we also had another death in the city.
What about the two other people?
This is, this is announcements. This is not discussion.
Okay, on that note, that is all that I have. I would like to, do we have any motions to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
First by Mr. Gregory, second by Mr. McCormick. All in favor?